One nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
I'll take it down to read it.
That's a good idea.
What?
Very good.
Let's stay with the agenda.
Yes.
Me and the motion is time to move on.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Those opposed?
It's normally where you sit here, so just push it down for a while.
No, I want to be in the middle.
Don't forget to do chair invite letter.
Yes, we're doing this first.
Oh, yes, I would like to nominate Carol as chair another year.
I will second that.
Do you accept?
I'd like discussion.
All right, would you like to discuss that?
No.
Okay, do we have a vote?
All in favor?
All right, good.
All right, there we go. And I'd like to make a motion again for vice chairman.
I'll second that. I'll second, yeah. I'm in favor.
You guys are already into it.
With the TV rolling out there is going.
You're slacking on your job.
But, oh, I would love to approve the minutes of August 4th with the edited note that Jason was in fact at the meeting.
Yes.
By no slight excluded in the minutes of the 4th that I am said voting to approve.
Clark, I was just really ambitious.
What did you just say? All those in favor?
I.
There we go.
Open bid for tax required property was due on time. Dan loves to do that, just don't rip the check. We don't, I understand, have any bids for the bandstand repair? We'll have to try again in the spring.
Still?
I actually had to vote because some people called. Some other out of town.
Oh.
What's the board, what property, I can't remember.
Jason, are you gonna procure?
Mm-hmm.
You got to state it, just for the record.
You can't sit at the table, you can't sit at the table.
Yeah, sorry.
Do I have to sit in the back row?
What is this?
No, you're gonna sit in the corner. No kidding.
Is this for the bandstand repair?
No.
Which one is it?
Back of the book, right, back of the book.
What one's at the one next to, uh?
Just past motel. Just before.
The past that little, that little house, too?
Just before that trailer.
Where's the trailer?
Some of the stuff out there.
Yes.
We would like to give the bid in the amount of $10,000 for the land on County Road known as Math 8, lot 25. We feel this is a fair market value for this parcel of land. Please find enclosed a check in the amount of $1,000 which gives 10% deposit of bid from Susan and Jason of ACs. Well, that's the only bid, what should we do with it? What did we have it on for before?
Twenty thousand.
What was the minimum bid?
We reduced it to fifteen.
Oh. Well, I don't know. I didn't hear him suggesting we reduce the bid. You seem to think it was worth more at the time, my own thing. But I mean, what shall we have? What shall we have?
I still got to get that. Excuse me? I told him I refused to pay fifteen.
Oh, okay, so this really your bid?
I gave him all you know, like, seventy to fifteen.
Well, I thought personally that it was too much for the beginning, in the beginning, so then I know the board remembered, thought that I was wrong.
Come on, Dan, say it, say it. Carol, you're right.
No.
No, he doesn't have to.
Well, I make the motion that we accept the bid. I'll second that.
All in favor? There, you're a proud owner of some land.
Any oppose?
Did you oppose?
Yeah. It's an easy oppose, because.
All right, I oppose.
In eight years, it's the only thing that's kept them honest.
So, um, we're supposed to be talking about, it was supposed to be on the agenda on, I think, because Jimmy and Chuck were saying, so I'm gonna go out of the.
It is on the agenda, it's on number six.
Number six?
Is he coming, he ever said update? Oh, okay, so we'll have to wait for the sixth because CEO is coming to update us on that building.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Okay, sign, so how about we, let's go to the safe harbor ad hoc. Julie sent in a.
Thank you, Dan.
I am writing to thank the select board for creating the safe harbor act ad hoc committee. The committee has successfully completed its work by contributing to the formulation of its design, which is now complete. At this stage of the safe harbor project, committee feels that this project falls under the select board and ultimately the harbor board. Respectfully, Julie King. She made copies for everybody.
Does that mean they are no longer going to be in a safe, sorry, safe harbor?
Well, it's anything I know. It's really the harbor board, it was an ad hoc, it's just, the definition of an ad hoc committee is as a particular.
When is, when are we gonna build?
When will there be a ripple in the bank?
Some visible activity.
Yeah.
When the contract is sent to us, and we get what's called the notes to proceed, it goes out to bid and the contractors start.
So twenty twenty-four, or?
It should be by next summer, should be ceilings, seeing some dirt move by next summer.
Technically, we do.
Can I get this, not particularly the safe harbor, do we have any other open ad hoc committees right now? I don't think so. I don't know that the school.
AOS withdrawal committee?
Excuse me?
The AOS withdrawal committee.
I was just gonna say, I don't think the, right, I don't think the AOS, they never, I don't think they finished. They sent in a big long, Dan Jane has submitted a huge report.
Who? That one. That was the high school piece of.
Yeah, no, this was to separate from the district. Ad hoc committee that was. I didn't think we, we never created an ad hoc committee for that.
Wanda Matthews.
Wanda and Barbara Stelley. And can you show me the minutes of when the select board created that ad hoc committee to go separate, oh, to separate.
It's like two years now.
It's like two years since it was created. No, no, it needs to, they need to come to a conclusion, they need to submit a report. Okay, good question. Let's hold off on the appointment papers till the end. Sand bid.
This is just letting you know that I am putting out the ad, I've already submitted it to the Hawaii Tides for the, for the winter sand. It's just notifying you that it's gonna be in the paper this week.
Now, that was fifteen hundred dollars this year.
Yes, Ricky reduced it. He must have surplus from last year.
Yeah, we had a lot left over, that's, they did a great job.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll skip six because he's not here yet.
He's on his way, he's just messaged.
CDBG letter of business assistance grant, yes, is that on our packet?
Yeah, I read it.
Says role of good responsibilities over.
Yeah, H and D's all.
It's right after the closing treaty now.
Dear Ms. Dennison, thank you and your staff for your assistance for the closeout of the Town of Lubec's 2017 Business Assistance Grant HGCB. The DECD received a closeout report in February 4th, 2018, from the Town of Lubec, summarizing both the financial and programmatic status of the 2017 Business Assistance Grant. I'm pleased to inform you that the closeout report has been accepted by the DECD staff. The state considers the town's grant performance satisfactory, therefore, all conditions required for final closeout associated with this grant have been met and shown below. So, uh, that's fine, that's wonderful. So there were questions around about particular sale, and I think that's cleared that all up. They are pretty clear, they sell their property, they provide by all their grants and situations, and we wish them well. Any questions? Other business? Loan documents, okay, so we have this big packet of loan documents, which is more, creating a bond is what it looks like to me. It's not just loan documents. So we need, um, I need a motion for a resolution of the board, it's like when the Town of Lubec to accept the grant, as of per the citizens voted yes on August 4th. So we need a motion for that, and it also authorizes myself and its secretary to execute and deliver this, and there's all kinds of papers submitted, Suzette.
I make a motion and sign it.
Renee and I have to sign it.
You sign the document as written.
Right, and you have to authorize all the signatures, besides this one, it's all chair and town clerk. We need permission to sign it. That's what this is.
Was there a treasurer or something?
I think Suzette might be in there as well, so I think all three of us in there for something. But before we sign anything, you have to sign this.
Yep.
Authorizing us to sign it, so you need a, you need a motion, I can't, I don't think I should, I don't see how I can vote to allow myself to sign it, so.
So all in favor?
I second it.
I did.
I just, there was a sample of the, for that, I, I, there was a sample of the reading of the.
Yes, oh, okay.
Okay, being resolved, I, I read all of this, but I think this is the only thing you guys have to sign.
There's two things that they have to sign.
Oh, you have to sign this one, too?
It's in this.
There's this.
Okay. Well, why don't I read with your signing here, the board of selection of the Town of Lubec hereby resolved and has authorized its chair and his secretary to execute and deliver RUS Bulletin 1780-12, Water or Wastefulness Grant Agreement. On behalf of the Town of Lubec, substantially in the form presented to this meeting, will such changes and additions, as they in a discretion may be necessary or appropriate. Resolutions for the Town of Lubec acting through its appropriate officers are designated and its bylaws will take all necessary and appropriate steps to carry out the transactions contemplated by the grant agreement approved at this meeting. All in favor? Aye. So, I don't know whether I need, I should be put in there, what do you think, Renee? Yes, I'm, I'm gonna vote, good, yay, five yeas, any ayes? Nobody absent. Now, let's sign this, and what's today, the 18th day?
Oh, wait, this is the one, Carol. That's your packet.
Doesn't matter, no. Okay.
And this is the other one, reading all five signatures out.
Okay, good. See what's going on there. Oh, all right.
This isn't.
So, can you show me what, I'm confused, I think it's for this document here.
No, no, no.
This is for this, oh.
Yeah, there's another one in there.
Well, there's only votes, but there isn't any signature. There's no signature page here. Let's do this first. So this is, um, Town of Lubec Resolutions of the Board of Selectmen relating to issuance of bonds, acceptance of grants, and setting of rates. Shall we read it, or have we all reviewed this in our packet?
I think we've reviewed it.
I'm reading it early.
Yes.
Oh, good, so. Who wants to make a motion to accept and sign the resolutions to issue, to the issuance of bonds, acceptance of grants, and setting of rates?
I would like to make a move that we sign this to the acceptance of bonds and issuance of rates.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Is there anything out there? Did pretty well. So we'll go this way. So, let me see. Was it in that packet? In what you're showing me?
Uh, it's, uh.
Was it in?
It was.
Because I was given this packet for, this whole thing to read about three days ago.
It's after the bulletin page 70, it's after the electronic one, sure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nancy was not in here.
Doesn't Nancy have to sign this?
Yes, you have to sign this. So that's dosey do.
Trade.
I, yeah.
That one's gotta go there and then the one. I think it's not on this one.
Pass away. I'm still looking, but it's not, it's not been in the original deal.
Do you like mine back?
Oh, here, Board of Municipal Officers.
I see it.
And these are all Suzette. Well, whatever. Are we getting out of here, Renee?
Of course, me.
I don't have that, I don't have that in what you told me to review, so I just.
But you're looking for the one, I'm looking for that.
It's in your packet that's in your hand.
Yes, this is wastewater.
It's in, yeah.
It's a big packet. Okay, but it's not in that one, which you told me.
It's in that.
I'm looking. Oh, there it is. Being resolved that the board of selection of the Town of Lubec approves and accepts in all respects a proposed loan of $2 million, at an interest rate not to exceed 1.25 for a period of 29 years, in the USDA rule development for the purpose of FY '21 wastewater treatment facility and pump stations upgrades in accordance with long resolution public bodies, RUS Bulletin 1780-27, and a proposed grant in the amount of $1,610,000 in accordance with grant agreement, RUS Bulletin 1780-12, and the resolution of the board of selected to authorize the chair, thank you very much, and the clerk of the board to execute and deliver all documents and to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect such financing, including but not limited to Form RD 400-1, Equal Opportunity Agreement, and Form RD 404 Assurance Agreement. RUS Bulletin 1780-27 was presented and voted upon as follows. Doesn't that see what we've done already, and this is just a recording of it? So it was five yeas, we're not voting on this again.
No.
This is just zero names, zero absent. The resolution of the board of Town of Lubec to change into the rule development grant was presented and voted upon as follows. Five yeas, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Zero names and zero absent. Now, was that the not, is that an original? I mean, did you have this, you needed? You use this one, or do you want us to do it again? There's no signature on it.
I just figured we'd fill that in later.
Well, I think we have a, was this just a recording of what we just voted on? Is what I'm trying to figure out, we already said it once.
Right.
Okay, there you can have.
A sort of quite copy of that one is sent to USDA.
Say so.
By our bomb shelter.
Even though where we are. Well, we have to do appointment papers, and we're still waiting on Gary. Arc Animal Shelter Contract.
Okay, that's in your packet. Our animal control officer, Sheldon Lyons, has requested us to change our contract for kennels to animal, the Arc Animal Shelter located in Cherry Field. He is willing to transport the animals to Cherry Field.
Really?
Our current contract is with private ranch. Dogs and cats.
Don't think dogs and cats?
Yep.
Nice.
Why is there no fire there, or why?
He had a bad experience, unfortunately, he was stuck on the weekend, and he wasn't able to get ahold of our current contract holder, and the Arc does have an emergency contact immediately to look on, so. He's requesting.
And the town is billed fifty dollars per dog.
Instead of what we pay now, which is $300
flat.
Flat fee per quarter, this is charged per occurrence.
How many occurrences have we had last year?
Oh, maybe two or three.
Oh, that's.
Yeah. Maybe none. Years that we don't. Yeah, there's not many. Probably more cats than anything. And where we don't have a cat contract anymore, we don't have SOS anymore.
That's right.
This would be a two for one deal.
Yep.
So I guess it just needs fifty.
It's also an additional fee of $13 per dog and nine per cat will be billed to your town sitting for each animal because the animal is declared by the town as abandoned or surrendered. This fee is incurred until six day holding period, or the 10 day quarantine period is our best means of ownership to be held. Is that per day? That's per day, so that's a lot more money, that's just fifty dollars. So, $13 times 10 is $130. And then they'll take it, so certainly fifty dollars per dog, unless the owner tells it gets the dog, it's actually $130 plus 50, so it's $180.
Well, it would be a six day hold in most cases unless it's a bite case, that's, that would then be the 10 day quarantine, so it's, what is it, seventy? Seventy-eight dollars for the six days on top of the fifty.
Right. So, hopefully we don't have one of three dollars. But I think, I think it's necessary, because if you can't get ahold of somebody on the weekend, what do you expect the animal control officer to do?
He ended up, what's he supposed to do?
Do we need to have a?
The first night, he ended up keeping the dog himself in his own house.
So I make a motion that Renee is allowed to enter into this contract for the town. Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor? I didn't see any. You're not in favor of it?
No.
Okay, any ayes?
I could send it to you, man.
Yeah, what's the drop vote? So four, four, did you say yes? Okay, we've got two ayes, why don't you try to make, taking turns saying no.
At different times, I wonder.
Yeah, that's right, at different times. Very good. Adult ad payment CD withdrawal, so it's our annual payment of, and we've already made an agreement, we're gonna sign something.
That might be the very back one.
I don't see any crisis.
I think it's the very back one.
Here it is. Select board has authorized for ZF grants withdrawal accounts, adult ad CD account, and deposited into the general fund $17,900, it covers the outbell ad program, can we have a motion to accept it?
So moved, yeah.
All in favor? I know six documented, oh, let's go, Gary's here now, so we can go back to CEO update on Pleasant Street. You're on, Gary.
I got ahold of Eileen, and asked her what she was wondering with the house, and she said she was working on it, and she needed a name of the contractors in the town that could send her a bid, or if she could get ahold of, so I sent her the welcome packet with all the contacts, all contractors, names and numbers, and sent it there, and she said she will get back to us when she can.
Did you give her a time frame? I think, I, I think we should send her a letter saying she has X amount of time to get it done, because everybody is very upset about it, the whole, as far as I know. And I've got a couple of people here that willing to speak on the subject. Nothing to do with you, Gary, I know you've been on and asked her and talked to her and talked to her, but at some point, if she doesn't do it, we have to as a town, as David's building. Jim?
Yeah. I was sitting out on the front porch one day, and I see all these kids, and they ran up the front steps, and of course, the building is wide open now, we opened it all up. The kids went in, started banging on the keys of the piano that's in the front room, right? The floors were all wide open. And here comes the mother, and I said to the mother, you gotta get those kids out of this building. I said, you know, it's unsafe, and she said, well, kids will be kids, and I said, well, when they get there, you know, you're gonna be paying a doctor bill. And she said, well, I just sue, you know? I mean, that's her, that was her attitude, and I said, well, get the kids out of the building. I said, there's a yellow tape right there, but it didn't bother them, the kids just ran right in. And I see people all the time, they stop right on Pleasant Street, they get out of the car, they walk up the steps, and they go in, they look around. I mean, it's dangerous, there's no floor in certain sections of that building. I mean, because I went over there, and when the guy was working over there, taking everything else, he's been back twice, and all he's done is, he took all the, you know, what he wanted, and, and he still hasn't been back, and people keep going in. Something's gonna happen.
I want to ask the question, though, and you're gonna hear me say this a hundred times. Who is gonna make sure that out of this list of contractors, that this building is disposed of in the proper manner? That it doesn't end up in a gravel pit somewhere? Who's, who's gonna make sure that they take the load tickets, and this thing's disposed of right? Because the town's in this. We're demanding this is tore down, and we better be damn sure that this is going to a legal, and I'll say it three times, legal.
Or it'll be whoever you take.
Landfill, legal.
I mean, you gotta make sure that whoever you have take it down obeys by.
That's what I'm saying.
The law.
They still go to, they still go to gravel pits.
Is there a yellow tape for that?
But it's all wide open now, Rachel.
What?
You've got two entrances, there was one in the back, and there's one in the front. And, and they pack right there on Pleasant Street, and walk right up the steps, and go right in.
Yeah.
And, and it's not safe, someone's gonna drastically get.
Well, yeah, and there used to be raccoons and all kinds of.
It is, there were raccoons and slumps and everything else.
Yeah.
Really, I just asked a question, I'd like to have an answer. Who's gonna make sure that this is legally taken care of?
I have just a couple, how long have we been notifying this owner that the building is unsated? What?
At least, because I have.
So taxes are paid on this building each year? I agree that, like, a, I would say like seven day, you're doing this communication by email?
Yeah, she's in Virginia.
At this point, the select board has already voted to proceed with the dangerous building process, and it is a process. It's not just, so Gary, this is a last ditch hail mary of trying to get the property owner to do it without the town stepping in.
It needs to be done with a letter, a legal, a letter from the town from Gary with the date of when she has to complete.
He's already done that.
Okay, then what, what's our next step? I thought that we, the town was able to take it over and, and take it down ourselves, and then we put it back.
Gotta have, gotta have public hearings, and the town's gotta vote on it, that we can.
And they would definitely vote on it, everybody would vote on it, it's a terrible town.
I just had one.
That's why we're just trying one last ditch effort, because she thought.
Two years.
So thought that it was being taken care of by whoever she wants.
When, when the town has to take it down, would be my position, how do we pay for that? Do we have a?
We have money set aside, and then it's attached to the taxes, and the state now says they get the three years to pay it, and they don't pay it, then it goes to the tax required property.
How much? How much do we have set aside?
Like eighteen thousand.
Does that have no idea, you know?
Yeah.
Demolishing.
We don't know, that, that's why I wish it would be in the hands of the town that gets to hire a town off a contractor, they don't wanna see it.
If we're, if we're giving this list out to these contractors, we ought to make damn sure that they're not dumping it on the side of the road or in a gravel pit. We are furnishing folks with these names.
Well, we would, we would want a contractual.
Agreement.
Agreement.
Who is going on?
Who's accepting it that they need to sign it prior to starting the work?
That's once this dangerous building process starts, right now, it's still the property owner's responsibility.
So what's a reasonable amount of time to give her?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Ted, Renee, where I'm going with this.
Right, Gary, thirty days.
We're giving this woman a list of names.
We give it to everybody.
Right.
It's, it's a public document.
Now, if this gets dumped out in woods, the town, the town shares a liability.
They gotta be licensed.
The town shares a liability.
No, I, I don't think we're liable for any names.
If we give names out, we are, I'm telling you right now. If you're giving a name out.
I'm giving a name out, and everybody's on the welcome packet, I'm just picking out.
And it's a packet that the historical society and.
I think it's open to the county.
Yeah, like historical society, it's like the little welcome wagon.
Didn't you put a bid in that, at $12,500 one time? No?
He gave a, her an estimate of taking it down, and so had somebody else, and that was last year.
Over two years ago, but it wasn't that. But I'm just saying, any way you look at it, we're giving names out, we best be damn sure of doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Well, they're on that, they're the contractor, so that's, they have to do the job right, not my job.
Does our demolition form stay in there, compliant with disposal of?
The demolition form goes to the property owner, and then property owner's responsible for having it done, making sure it's done right.
Properly and all that.
They have the body, they have to fill out, and they, the state, all pages are there.
But I mean, if she hired somebody to do it, and she never met the person, and she's in Virginia or wherever, the person who was doing it here would need to fill out that form, then sign him that he did have.
She filled it out, the top part's her and the property owner, then the contractor had the section that they filled out and signed and sent off to the state. And it takes seven days, five days prior to demo, then I call up there after it's been sent, and they defend it, five days later, or the. Five days later or the next two, then they not them. Then I called the state, Sandy Moody, and she tells me yes or no to get her down.
Well, what about this guy that didn't do his job? Did he have permission from the state? I'm curious.
From her.
From the state?
Yeah, well, that form that we sent in with the, for demolition for, the state okayed him to take it down.
But they must okayed him to do the one down on, uh, Lower Pleasant.
Yeah.
Across Hungarian.
We don't answer for this.
We never does the paperwork out there.
Well, yes.
The, um, the whole process of making it a.
He did stop there. He wasn't there. He left a fear. He left, he went down across from Gary.
I think he needs to make sure it's gone.
And started carrying that one, taking stuff out of that one. If he did, I saw him.
He was burning in the back. He had a pile of that burning. So he was living there as a property owner, burning three steps out by the cover, down in his vestage.
No.
No, I know.
No, he did go down there.
I'm telling you, he didn't.
I saw him.
We went down there, we saw him.
Yeah.
And we said, what's he, I have, he was over here on Pleasant Street. Then he went down there on Lower Water, so I walked, Pleasant Street.
Doing that other house.
And he was burning and taking stuff out of there too.
He took just what he wanted.
He had to party down and he's gotta, he had to do that house too, down there.
So he was going back and forth, that's what he was doing. And he took just what he wanted and then he never come back.
I think somebody said that was gonna happen.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Well, I think, I think somebody's report to the state is, is quality of work because he can't be approved by the state if that's what he's doing. Would be my personal opinion.
Actually, he only took what he wanted. The second time he came back, all she did was strip the metal out of the house. I saw him put it all on the, um, his journal. I'm right across from there. I can see everything that goes on. I got four eyes. I mean, I can see.
Four eyes, you got good ears too.
Yeah, very good ears.
I mean, do we ask his representatives to, um, enforce anything from the state? So that is there any way that we would be responsible to, for them to know that, like, take pictures of what they did and what he didn't do and send it to the people that said that he couldn't do it?
Call your attorney and find out.
The CEO, they must train, it's not in my real background.
No, it's not, it's not our, not our responsibility.
You're going to get home to Portland as your attorney and ask if you can do that.
But Gary, you're, you're trained by the state, right?
Yeah.
Right. You're, you're a CEO, so you're, you're actually the one that oversees you is the, uh, fire.
Fire marshal's office, right. But they're also part of safety in buildings.
You, yourself, we're not. You are trained by the state.
That's why I'm asking it.
That's why we, yes, that's why we have a, we haven't trained. And he's doing a hell of a job.
So coming back around, we are sending her.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, send her a notice, uh, thirty days.
Well, we have to ask Gary there.
Oh.
Yeah, I think it has to come from, did it come from you or us?
Me.
I was gonna say, we can leave that up to Gary.
Yeah, that's up to Gary.
Ten days.
Can we put a, I don't, you know, I don't.
Why are we giving her thirty? She said three years.
That's kind of Gary's wheelhouse.
Yeah.
As a seven.
What do you think's reasonable?
The standard is thirty days and forty-five days we reply.
It's what is standard and required.
Have you, and we've never done that before?
I gotta follow that.
So in the original correspondences with her, was the expectation of that, that she responded? Did she meet those timelines in response?
Yeah, she, she must have timed on it in response. I, I text.
But not in action?
I text her Monday morning, eleven o'clock Monday night, we're texting back before I come on the phone.
But she never got action to, well, just finally? So, you know, I don't know.
If she's on a mission, go ten days. Well, I talked to Gary. And that's his job. I'm not going to talk on Gary's toes.
But I guess the whole thing is we're behind you. What can we do to help you?
Yes.
Because the town, as we represent the citizens, are very upset about the building. And we, obviously, you're doing a great job and all, there's so many buildings to address.
Yeah.
If there's anything you need from us, we're there to help you.
You may need some more caution tape about this house.
What was happening?
That was nice.
I had, I had to go get some more.
That's not my bonus hour, I'm there. Okay.
But we could get with the attorney, too, see what I mean, or if we can make it shorter than ten, thirty days.
Shorter than that.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Move the marriage.
Well, I mean, what's your, what's your feeling?
Add on the, the list.
Well, I think he, he said he wants to talk to the attorney before he makes any decisions.
I mean, what's your feeling on it? It's, it's kind of your, it's your thing, so.
Go back down tomorrow and walk away from it.
We did that on the table.
There you go, there's an answer for you.
That's gonna happen, you know, now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but that was in the middle of the day, not.
Well, good, just a wig on to my next thing.
What was your next thing? I better wait. Well, we're talking about two neighbors here, so don't do that. Right?
Well, the whole thing is, I'd like to see it burnt down. Pay it away, I mean, because someone's gonna get hurt. I mean, somebody, the kid set it on fire a long time ago when he first got here. I mean, and I'm surprised they didn't go back in again and do it. I mean.
The thing with the yellow tape around it, if they get hurt, why is the tape around it?
Yeah, but there's no tape left in the front area.
The town is not liable for it if they cross the yellow line.
That's make sure you put that yellow tape around there about five times.
Get more yellow tape.
Get more yellow tape.
That's a duct tape.
It might blow down in the wind since two, three, I mean, Monday when I was there, but it was up. But if they cross that line, the town is not responsible for it because they.
They've been cautioned.
In constant areas of safety.
Yeah, no. Kids, like the woman said, made, she said, they're kids. Kids to be kids.
You're a big kid, you're a grown up one.
No, but the whole thing is common sense. I mean, with it wide open like that, Gary, how are you gonna stop kids from getting in?
All right, Gary, a question. Thank you very much. I thought you did a wonderful job of contributing to why we need this building down. We see that it's a little more complicated than just.
Yeah, I know.
A gavel and it's going. I agree.
Could I ask one more question of Gary?
Last question.
Last question. Do you, and this is just a supposition. Does she give any inkling of what she intends to do with that space?
Yeah, she wants it, the building gone, the basement filled in, the gravel pad put up there, and she's gonna put a modular home up there. So when she retires from Virginia, she could come back here and say.
She's not making a home on French right now.
No. Gotta get that ordinance.
Nobody wants to see a nation's building there, someone concerned.
Thank you very much, Gary. I know you do double, triple duty.
You have five hats.
Really?
So, uh, we have to sign a couple of documents for Suzette, a nine oh six document and a BMB weekly payment authorization. So one is for, we, the municipal officers of the town, upon request of the tax collector, hereby authorize and direct said tax collector pursuant to Title thirty-six Maine revised statutes annotated section nine oh six to apply any tax payment received from an individual as payment for any property tax against outstanding which only put taxes due on said property in chronological order beginning with the oldest unpaid tax bill, providing however that no such payment may be applied to any tax for which an abatement application or appeal is pending unless approved and writing by the tax payer. Hope to entertain a motion for that.
I'll second it.
All in favor? We can do that one in a minute. We, the municipal officer of the town of Lubec Maine, upon request of the BMB agent of said town, hereby authorize and direct said threshold pursuant to PL six LD one thirty, an act to allow municipality greater flexibility to disperse state fees, to permit to disperse under state fees due from BMB reports stated May weekly, and a dispersment warrant is consigned by one of, one or any of five designated municipal officers, the warrant, one of any of the five designated municipal officers. The warrant will be available at the next regular work order meeting for review. Is this just an annual thing we have to do?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we can sign that.
I'll second it.
All in favor? This is all annual stuff that comes up after the annual town meeting. Now, what, what we have all, um, just number five, add the paving bid. Renee just wanted us to know that she's submitted.
Just letting you know, we have the paving bid as well.
So now all, what we've been waiting for is sign the appointment papers.
No, no, there's one more.
Oh, my God.
What, what was it?
The something.
This, this for, for lending. And then there's, there's seven, there's seven items.
Oh, I don't have anything else.
Well, you guys.
Yeah, you wrote, did you write it down?
Solicitation for lending.
Right.
I told you it was.
Maybe she just added.
Oh, 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 yes, sorry, yes, she did add it to me. So this is it, though?
Nope, there's one more.
He's got one more that he wants right now.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. So we're just, we need, you need a motion. So I make the motion that we could, that you could send out a solicitation for bids for the interim financing for the two million dollars. Because it was written by the lawyer and not by anybody.
Mandy.
Uh, oh, Mandy Oliver, yeah, who obviously knows what you do.
Yeah.
Second, all in favor? Okay, Jason, you're on.
Okay, I've had a lot of folks in town approach me about police coverage. There's been a lot of stuff going on. I don't know if you folks are aware of what's been going on. There's been break-ins, there's been vandalism, there's been four-wheelers stolen. This has been going on and on and on. And a lot of citizens have approached me about getting the sheriffs to cover this area again. And I told them I would bring it up. They're very concerned. We have, we have an older population here now. We have a population that I used to have in a police presence.
Yeah.
And they're protecting their four-wheelers?
Things have changed. And, I mean, I think it's time and a lot of other people don't.
You mean, uh, municipal police force?
No, for what? That'll never happen.
Okay, so wait, the sheriff, so the sheriff or officers don't have any more time for us?
Yeah, the only thing we can do is request through the sheriff's department, like we did several years ago.
A special.
If we can up the ante.
Yes, we have to pay.
For more time here. We do pay for some limited auxiliary time and.
No.
Eight thousand dollars.
Well, what exactly what he's talking about? What, what is he talking about?
Talking forty hour coverage is what people are talking about. They're talking about meeting coverage back there.
How are you gonna?
Bill, Bill member.
You're gonna find a policeman that's gonna do that?
Sheriff's department.
Has offered to come down and make a presentation. For forty hour, uh, coverage and purchase of a cruiser dedicated to Lubec?
So essentially, it's like a full time.
Right, through the sheriff's department.
A lot of citizens have spoken.
And we have to go to vote before the people?
That's funny.
Right.
I don't have a problem with them giving us a motion.
Money possibly could be taken from the undesigned needed.
Where else would it come from?
Finally got it, well, right, we'd have to have, we, our tax commitment hasn't happened yet. You could tack it on before the commitment happens if we can get it in before September.
I mean, I mean, as when somebody gets killed, it's too late.
So we need the presentation.
I guess my question would be only, um, my understanding is that the Washington County Sheriff's Department don't have enough patrol officers now to cover the county.
They're fully staffed. Their staff. It's the local PDs that are struggling. Like East Court, Machias, Baileyville, Milburn.
Where is this person gonna be coming from?
We need the presentation from the sheriff.
So who said the presentation, Mike Crabtree?
Jason has been talking about it.
Mike and Barry.
Uh, yeah, I, Mike and Barry are, they're great. I, I'll take it, we'll take it. I'll make a motion, they can bring the presentation.
Can they come in two weeks? If they can come in two weeks, that'd be great.
They, they're probably very prepared, 'cause I know Jonesport did the same stuff.
Can we do some kind of like, um, better notification to the towns? People, um, 'cause I understand, things are different in town now and population wise and there probably is, but I think we need to have enough people at the meeting that if something.
Well, we need to advertise that this meeting, they're gonna present this.
You know, like we need to make sure that.
We'll put it on green sign. There's a certain way that we do most everything.
Right, I mean, give me extra pushback that the sheriff's coming in two weeks to talk about a proposed plan, put coverage back in.
But there's a certain way that we, we're supposed to notify and we just follow.
In, um, in your survey, the town survey of crime watchers, would you please give me a, an indication of where and when? Because my hunch is, it's not downtown.
It's all over the place.
It's all over the place. And I would say in the surrounding areas.
Cove, North of the Bay. It's been all over. But I'll tell you, the thing is, my job as a select person, when a citizen comes to me, a group of citizens come to me and they ask me to present this, sure, I'm gonna do it every time.
Of course, of course.
That's my job.
Yeah, I've heard the same thing. And, yeah, and I think that's, that's valid.
A lot of these, a lot of these older folks are damn scared. And it's gonna be too late when one of these people break into a house. And either an old person has a heart attack.
Sure.
Or they put a hole this big.
Well, Jason, the forty hours needs to be during the crime times, not in the middle of the day.
Correct, exactly.
And I just think that, um, you know, the public needs to be aware of like the projected expense in.
Absolutely.
You know, in ongoing budgets moving forward. If the gear goes down, it goes up.
It's about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand.
I think what you're going at, what they're doing, normally they consent to the select board. We would decide as a select board if it was good for the town. And then I believe the select board would call a public hearing. And then we would call a special town meeting. And then I believe the select board would call a public hearing, and then we would call a special town meeting, and that's how that would all work. So it would be, first they come to us, and of course, it's an open meeting, we would decide if that's good for the town, and then we would ask Renee, after we have a motion and a vote, when we've done this for other things, that we have a public hearing.
Sure.
Which is when we have all the advertising, and then they all talk about what they want or don't want, and then we go to special town.
It goes in the paper.
And I have a, a, a argument for special town meeting as well, so we would go to a special town meeting to see how we would, uh, we would acquire the money.
What were they talking about?
Right?
Wasn't it a hundred and something?
About a hundred and fifty, I think that's it.
So, just biggest expense, that's not, that's, was it purchased with the cruiser that got?
And then there's the annual expense of a salary person.
No, that was everything, that was, I won't put it away.
That's an, that's everything for one year, and then the next year.
Yes.
It goes down.
But I mean, how do we say can't afford it when we have other things that cost forty, fifty thousand dollars, to get the money back out of it?
But we just, there's a point that we can't spend, uh, we can't spend our undesignedated down a certain amount of percentage.
Along those.
You know, we gotta recite them.
Right, right. Just gotta build up.
Yes, there's, there's legally that we can't. And we don't know how much money we have. Sure, and along those lines, I would, um, mention to people that. Well, you must, we're still discussing the motion up here. Excuse me, I'll say. Could I talk?
Well, you had to be seconded. I know you've been, it's time enough to discuss.
Yes. Uh, that, that the citizens of this town, as in many other towns, become more vigilant in looking at what's going on. And that they, I know around where I live, we have a network of phone calls if we see anything. And there is quite a bit of, it's not necessarily crime, it's just vagrancy and silliness, but we call each other.
She gets calls all the time.
Yeah, well, I.
There's, there's people out in the middle of the north, back on the corner, four people, right out on the road.
Painting.
Painting.
Painting?
I, I can't even make it up.
Painting as in art?
I can't even make it up.
I'm not Lubec, Rob.
Yeah, can't make it up on the corner.
I read, gee.
Paint, painting as in art or painting as in?
They were on the road, they were artists in the road painting, and somebody almost ran over them, and Jason is one of them.
Such, uh, Rachel, to your point of neighborhood watch, and knowing what's going on and we know the signs, the thing that the, the forty hour a week sheriff would do for the town would be the response time, it's not that they're gonna find the problem, because you still need the na, the network watch, the neighborhood watch. Yes, what, what, what happens here is, an alarm goes off or someone sees something and they don't get here for an hour. That's right. So that is why we need the person, we don't expect this one person to cruise around ninety-two miles of shoreline and catch anybody.
I was talking to Renee the other day about this, and can't even make it up, four cruisers went by.
And I met two more, so that makes six.
Yeah, six cruisers went by me, and.
They were all here.
Yep, all six of them.
Oh, I know, well, I know, no.
And I said, geez, doesn't matter, Tom.
Well, just keep in mind, there's a hundred and sixty-eight hours in a week, and we're asking for forty to be covered.
Which would have to be the evening ones, and the weekends, you'd have to figure out how it would be rotated.
And that gives a lot of, that goes on.
So maybe he ought to present forty or eighty or, you know, somewhere sixteen.
Forty hour weeks in a bunch of fifty, sixty thousand dollars per year, which is salary that plus money.
Well, yeah.
Why not check in on?
But I think, I don't think we can afford it.
So you can get Gary.
Why not check in on the marshal, the town marshal?
Constable, you mean?
Yeah, we called marshall, they still control the area, they keep an eye out, but they, they, under, under the sheriff's department.
We did look at that at one time.
We used to have constables, yeah.
You got a train, same as, you know, I mean, it's a, then it's town liability.
I think neighborhood watch is still a very good idea.
Neighborhood watch works intact.
Yeah.
It does not work in a place where nobody has a neighbor.
Right.
Well, no, but you have the closest neighbor.
No, I don't. And that was brought up by.
And you call that person, and that's the closest neighbor.
That was brought up by Mr. Crabtree several years ago.
Yeah.
Several years ago, uh, Mr. Crabtree addressed that situation, that said that the neighborhood watch doesn't work.
Who said that?
Mr. Crabtree, because he said, you can report all you want, but it's gonna take us, it could take us an hour and forty-five minutes to get it.
Well, that's the problem, you have to have somebody nearby that will respond.
So, it would be, if we had that. Well, you mean, I'll be the first one to get a ticket, and we did, 'cause I'd be the first guy to get a ticket, that's how lucky I am.
Just the way you drive, not just somebody.
You should talk.
I think it'd be really good to hear from the sheriff.
Okay, so he might have a meeting, he's gonna call me tomorrow, and he'll be here on my.
Well, we need to vote on whether we want a presentation, so we, I think I made a motion, if somebody seconded it, all in favor? Okay.
Uh, Holly must be watching, she says, sure thing got broken into, took seven hours for police to film.
Wow.
I called one time, it took me two hours, two hours, and I was.
Well, there's what, eight sheriffs for the entire Washington County?
In a violent situation, and it took only two hours, I told him I was on a dead end road, and I was being followed, two hours.
Maybe, and maybe he has some ideas around, 'cause I'm sure that, um, the challenge isn't exclusive to the fact, I'm sure Edmunds and Erie and, and, you know, like, there's a lot of towns around that probably have.
I can speak for Jonesport, 'cause I live down that way, and I know that they contract, not so much as they don't have their own cruiser, I don't believe, but they, they contracted over a hundred thousand, I know, for dedicated service, hours to be covered.
Well, I'm glad Holly brought that up too, because I didn't mean to leave the businesses out, but she's, she's right.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're businesses set up and down here, and, you know, I lived here in the days, we had colleagues checking the doors every night.
Lubec was asleep for a while, but now it's waking up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Things have changed.
We might find that a majority of the town is okay with expending funds to, you know, give that kind of stuff, or not, you know.
Right, we gotta put it to the voters.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So, uh, that being said, we have quite a few appointment papers to sign, very, very good, uh, points, thank you very much, Jason.
Should we give a public, should we give a public comment?
Now, you're gonna be, yes, we could, well, I think they have, well, we're, they can do it, we're just making a motion to put it on the agenda, I think.
No, but I'm saying public comment at the end of our meeting.
Well, we will.
Before we go into all the signature stuff.
Oh, okay, we could.
Just saying, I know they'd like to see it signed.
That's a very good idea, public comment. You happy with?
Yes, I think.
I'm pretty sure they would raise their hands, spoken anyway, Dan.
I wanna write this.
They're not, they're not being silent.
I wanna write this, I wanna write this down, he had nothing to say.
Well, I do have something to say, but I'm being nice.
Okay.
I wanna write that down too.
There is a list in your packet of all the names that is in that big thing.
Excellent.
Anybody, any, all the chair commit, oh, Carol, you wanted to go over the posting that I had made, and all the chairs will be given this.
Oh, this is a good thing, okay, so, Town of Lubec Committee Chair responsibilities. Annually, each committee shall elect committee chair and secretary. Who's our, oh, that's you. The committee may also elect a vice chair. These positions shall be recorded in the first meeting following appointment. It is the responsibility of the committee chair to communicate with the town clerk dates and times of meetings, also to provide the town clerk with reading minutes once approved by the committee. Committee chair shall ensure each member of the committee has been sworn into position prior to allowing a committee member to act. Committee chair shall prepare and provide to the committee members an agenda prior to the meeting of topics that will be discussed. The chair shall maintain order and organization at each meeting. Shall they all get their own gavel? I know Julie wanted one the other day.
We'd start fighting each other.
The committee.
Julie, who ordered one?
He.
My God, they're not gonna get her a hammer.
The committee chair shall ensure, strike that from the record, committee chair shall ensure the building is secure, doors and windows are locked, lights are off, this is very lovely, we're gonna, somewhere where they're really gonna see it.
Can we spell committee after hearing it twelve times?
I don't know, two Ts and two Es.
Two, um, two Ts.
Well, it's not spelled right.
No, it is, I've never heard the word committee so many times in a.
Well, you should try to read this.
Or a committee chair, a lot of responsibilities on the chair.
And we have a committee for a committee, clear gavel hammer.
All right, let's say now, we're gonna read, uh, I'm gonna read all the names, and then I will entertain a motion to accept them all, unless you have some.
Should we point out the two vacancies first, before their eyes start glazing over? There's two vacancies, the planning board associate member and the board of appeals, we both are looking for the public to step forward and fill those vacancies.
Just the planning board and?
Planning board, associate member, and board of appeals.
Okay.
Okay.
Town administrator Renee Gray, town clerk Renee Gray, treasurer Suzette Francis, task collector bookkeeper Suzette Francis, registrar voter Suzette Francis, agent, agent to the overseers of the four Suzette Francis and Renee Gray, deputy, emergency management Renee Gray, Carol Dennison, Rachel Roubière. Board of appeals Denise Rule, don't we need three on the board?
They are staggered, so hers, her term was up this year, that's a stagger.
So, we're appointing Denise, but why is there not two more people?
'Cause they're staggered.
Oh, 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 got it, got it, got it, staggered. Planning board Deborah Holmes, Wanda Matthews, Patricia Van Rollen, Marion Transfer Station Board Director Jason DeBasis, Rachel Roubière, Altonet, have you ever had to go to that?
Once.
Not when I was there.
Washington County Council of Governments Rachel Roubière, Carol Dennison, Altonet, Washington County Emergency Man, Management Medical Service Director Joanne Case, Robert Hood, Altonet, Cessar Agent Jim Clark, code enforcement officer Gary Rhodes, Jim, Jim Clark Deputy, fire chief Robert Hood, licensed plumber and plumbing inspector Bruce Green, budget committee Denise Rule, Heather.
Heather. You can scratch that, sorry, you can scratch that, she was elected, that's an oversight. Budget committee Denise Rule does not need to be appointed, she was elected.
Correct.
Health officer Mark Marlin, the Patrick, shellfish committee Amanda Lyons, Joshua Lyons, Tracy Sautel, Carol Dennison, Joseph King, James Fitzgerald, one of those has to be an alternate, there's only five. James is not always the one, we'll make James the alternate. We can't have a, a committee of six if you want. But that's fine, just make him an alternate. Economic development committee Rachel Roubière, Martha Van Howe, Wanda Welkens, Nancy Harrison, Renee Gray, Denise Rule, same with you, you have to get a, pick an alternate, you can't have a committee of six.
I'll pick the alternate.
I'll pick the alternate.
Harbor board committee Ricky Wright, Peter Boyce, Dan Wagner, Sean Karikoff, Derek Lyons, Joshua Lyons, alternate, Rusty Jackson, alternate, Carol Dennison, more alternate. Recycle committee Kenny, Kenny Moore, Gary Rhodes, Mike Scavani, Denise Rule, Deborah C V, David Olbers, Rachel Roubière, so with that committee, four, five, six, seven, three, four, five. I think. If you don't do two alternates, you're gonna have to have four people to vote on anything. Your quorum will be four people. I'll tell you, Michael and David, I think, are no longer part of it. Okay, so, take them off of any of the five. Animal control officer Sheldon Lyons, harbor master Ralph Dennison. Our, our L S committee Suzette Francis, administrator Renee Gray, Mike Scavani.
I'm deputy administrator. I'm not a voting member.
Okay, good, Mike Scavani, good, because then we have five.
Well, Suzette's not a voting.
Well, I knew that.
Yeah.
Mike Scavani, Kenneth Bradley, Peter Boyce, Cecil Moore, Dan Wagner. Celebration committee Wanda Matthews, Natalie Philicelli. Shellfish ward Sheldon Lyons, Amanda Lyons, Stephanie E nine one, officer Renee Gray, Kenneth Gray, alternate. All right, do you have any objections to that whole list, other than I meant, I, I make a motion that we accept it as written with the corrections?
Sorry, I'm.
Sorry.
Two seconds.
Okay, all in favor? Now, get your hand, arm ready. So, we only need three signature, here's, here's the trick to this, we only need three of us to sign all of it, each. Don't sign your own, it makes it invalid.
Do you second it, Dave? Do you second it?
Start signing, just, when you get to three, when you get to three, put them up there, you know, and there's some, we're able probably, you'll figure out what we changed here, we're just gonna keep signing without, we're gonna sign that.
So the issue is, we should sign the two, and she signs, they sign the two, you sign, so you're on all of them, 'cause you're the chairman of the world.
You can fix that. Oh, oh, well, I better start signing.
So you're gonna get.
Go above me, Dave.
They're gonna be here a while, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go, whatever it is.
Yeah, we're done, unless you wanna any more public comment.
So on September sixth, we'll talk about that.
September first, the next selectman's meeting?
I thought you said on September sixth, we talked about that, or.
The next selectman's meeting is September first.
September first.
Yeah, and the one after that is.
'Cause I'm not looking at this, is me, I'm having this.
Uh, I have something else I need to clarify, actually.
Oh, yeah, there I am.
The next selectman's meeting after the first is the fifteenth, and that reminds me, Carol, are we having, what are we doing about, uh, September eleventh this year? Is that still a holiday that?
When did you find out what the, what is the state?
The state, we knew last year, the state did not give off, did not close the holiday there, we did, but the state did not. I just needed to know, 'cause it got posted, it's like, well, we can have that on the first.
The date doesn't fall on, yeah.
Saturday.
Fall on Saturday?
Saturday.
Well, then, I, I think it's fine, I, I don't see any reason why we need the day off if it falls on Saturday, I mean, I just don't think people should work on that day, but it's Saturday. Until Biden wants to make it a national holiday, sort of reparation day. When it falls to like on a Monday or something.
Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna sign, just because he's not doing this anymore. He's not, he resigned from that committee?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
And I'm assuming David is not, only because he's got this job, he's signed from everything, right? Yeah. Well, I don't sign this.
You can bring your news on.
Well, thank you, Rachel. Your name's too long.
My email's too long. Town administrator at town of Lubec.
Well, we're sending all these, I'd like to thank everybody for volunteering for all these positions, because this is mostly all volunteers. Yes, Gary.
I was so busy.
Just the fame and the glory, there, there we go. Had the big rock. So.
But you would break these doors?
No, that's.
That's me, that's you who crossed out.
Well, that's who crossed out, well, then why couldn't Nancy did something? Uh, I didn't see it. Yeah, I started signing, I couldn't. I just gotta go down the other way. Ching, I know, she's playing a concert.
One of those too.
Here, here.
Oh, she is, outside, I saw them, I think a piano out there. Yeah, yeah. She plays, she plays several instruments.
Who's that?
Oh, Jane.
We're having Jane on the, on the lawn tonight, huh?
She's, she's crackling Jane, she does a lovely radio thing, very.
We've had the, we've had the cellists playing in our little season porch, right off there, on there, they'll be.
Yeah.
They'll work you.
We need to get the piano out of that house and put it on the street.
No, the, uh, the, the.
Car. Car?
The, the harp, thank you. See what I was doing?
I think it's more like this with.
Monkey in the Zoo thing, what is that? Yes, thank you.